Welcome to the twentieth meeting of the liquor commission. We ask that you please turn off your cell phones completely, so it will not interfere with the microphone and the recording. We ask when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly, clearly, and speak into the microphone. We have some minutes to approve. May I have motion, please?
A motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the twelfth meeting dated September twenty six, two thousand twenty four.
We have a motion to approve the min- the regular and executive session minutes, the twelfth meeting of September twenty six. Any days of reservation with reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, motion is carried. There is anyone in, anyone present who wishes to provide testimony on agenda item numbers one through fourteen, you may do so now. Or wait until the agenda item is called. We'll go right into agenda item number one. Application number two five dash zero one two 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 Village Events LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Dan E N H D A N G on behalf of Village Events LLC.
You mind walking us through your line?
Yes, this will be a private party for each hour. It's a power company. It's a holiday event for their employees and employees' family. The total attendance is estimated to be about five hundred guests. And it will be held at the same location as our night market, the village night market, in the parking lot, printing T G Maxx and C P K.
The setup is the same as you guys always have it.
Yes, but now it will be private.
Commissioners. Motion to approve application number two five zero one two two two.
Is been moved to a seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one two two two. Any days or with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye, motion approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number two five dash zero one two three seven Queens Waikiki L O L C.
Hello, commissioners, Michelle Sabatier here. I'm also my name because it's a little more complicated. M I C H E L L E, last name Sabater S A B A T E R, authorized agent for Queens Waikiki. LLC, I'm requesting special, I'm sorry, requesting approval for our special liquor license.
No questions. Motion to approve application number two five zero one two three seven, second.
It is in move, that's seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one two three seven. Any laser with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye, motion approved. Thank you. But the catering license applications, calling agenda item number three, application number two five dash zero one one nine eight. For seventeen eight productions. Seventeen eight. We will call them back again after. Move to agenda item number four. Request number two four dash zero zero one eight five. For Adson Cars LLC DBA booze. Booze. Be faster than we think. We will go to agenda item number five, request number two five dash zero one one nine three for K S L R L M LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Ms. Uriah Robert Wilo on behalf of Voyager forty seven. I'm located at the Alberta Waikiki Beach Resort. Present to my right is Ms. Barbara Campbell. She is the vice president of Alberta Hospitality Group. Also present is Michelle Witten. She's for actually a dinner item number six and I'll, she's general manager of Hula Girl Waikiki. At this time, with no changes investigated, report, this is for a reduction of premises to allow Hula Girl Waikiki to serve and sell alcohol in the existing Voyager forty seven club lounge.
Chairs, questions?
No question. A motion to approve. Motion to approve request number two five zero one one nine three, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one one nine three. Any names are with reservation?
No.
Seeing none, I also vote aye, motion is approved. Thank you so much. All in request number, agenda item number six, request number two five dash zero one one nine four.
Robert Wilo on behalf of Hula Girl Waikiki, presenting to my left is Ms. Michelle Witten. She is the general manager. We have no changes investigated, report. This is for temporary increase of premises for the Voyager forty seven club lounge at the Alberta Waikiki Beach Resort.
Questions?
No question. Motion to pull request number two five zero one one nine four, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one one nine four. Any names are with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye. Request approved. Thank you so much. Following agenda item number seven, request number two five dash zero one two one three Foodlands Supermarket Limited.
Good afternoon, this is chair members of the commission, Robert Wilo on behalf of Foodland Farms, present to my right, Mr. Tyler Amina. He's a director of Russia operations. We have no changes investigated, report, this is for a temporary reduction of the retail license to allow for a temporary increase of the dispenser license called the bar. We just wanted to have additional seating areas, not the biggest space, I think it's by fourteen by seven, I believe. The area that'll be increased, but we just want additional seating on the bar. This is the, this is the one in proceed. Sorry, six, sorry, sixteen feet by thirty five. I'm talking about the other case.
Is that the square in the center of?
Yeah. The square is the existing license premise and the portion highlighted in yellow is the additional portion. Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve request number two five zero one two one three, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one two one three. Any names are with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye, request is approved. Thank you so much. Calling agenda item number eight, request number two five dash zero one two one five. Foodland Supermarket Limited.
Robert Wilo on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited, doing business as the bar. Present to my right, Mr. Tyler Amina, he's a director of restaurant operations. This is the corresponding temporary increase of premises for the bar Spencer Liquor License application. Again, the space is thirty five, sorry, is sixteen feet by thirty five feet in that yellow area.
Issues? It's the same space, just different time, timeframe, right?
Same space corresponding, other one was a reduction of the rest of the retail, and this is an increase of dispenser. So it's taking up the exact same, giving up it.
Yeah. Okay, request. Motion to approve request number two five zero one two one five, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one two one five. Any laser with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the request is approved. Thank you so much. On the agenda item number nine, request number two five dash zero one one eight two. This is renewed and shoe Von Cook and Lincoln Ashida on behalf of Den Calacau Restaurants, DBA Daddys.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Sheen on path of Den Calacau Restaurants, Inc. We are filing, we're seeking permission to file a temporary standalone license in the former Tony Roma space.
There's that, there's not, nothing in that space since Tony Roma's closed, is that correct?
That's correct. Our client, these are the space, but understanding is that the layout of the building has not changed.
Issues or questions?
Motion to request, motion to approve request number two five zero one one eight two, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one one eight two. Any laser with reservation? Seeing none, I also vote aye, request is approved. Thank you. We will move into adjudications. Richard Bach will take the lead.
Good evening, Commissioner. We're making good time today.
Like agenda items numbers ten and eleven.
Deputy Corporation Counsel Mario Everett appearing on behalf of the city in both matters. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, William Comerford, C O M E R F O R D, and the President, Anne O'Briens Incorporated. I'm here to make a plea. The plea would be with explanation, no contest.
If you could go ahead and state the agenda item.
Agenda item number ten.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, may I have a motion to accept the plea?
Motion to accept the plea of no contest with explanation.
That's been moved and seconded to accept plea of no contest. Would you like to provide your explanation?
Sure.
I've operated in an all.
Second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just so the record is clear, if you're waiving the oral reading of the charge, or would you like me to read it out loud to you?
You can read it if you wish.
Sure, it's appropriate. Honor about April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty fourth through and including April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee permitted entertainment which caused complaints from the public or reports from the commission's investigators indicating that the sound emitting from the licensed premises caused undue disturbance which disrupted the peace and quiet of the neighborhood in violation of rule three dash eighty four dash seventy eight point zero three subsection B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
So we explain to you, I've been the operator there and had the licenses since two thousand and ten. I think if you see my record there, you can see there was no prior violations through that whole time. Due to COVID and circumstances, I lost a number of bars. I was in the process of trying to sell the bar to a management company. Management company being, I'm sorry, Eastside Urban and Brews. Those gentlemen came in with the idea they were going to operate by far as a management company. And they just, I disagreed with almost everything they did, but I had no controls, control their actions. As much as I could say, can I, can I make you stop doing this? I was trying to, and I could not get them to do it. They were unheeding what I made advice. That I felt they were risking the liquor license over time, and I took the license back on July first of two thousand twenty four. Just because I said they're not going to operate it right. The only thing I could do is take it back. So I just took it back at that time, and the issues that they've created are huge. They're still trying to buy bars and I will highly recommend that they're not seen as a viable candidate for a liquor license. And like I said, I'm back in order. The violations we had, I think, were related to the outdoor area. And I understand that they were playing music to one o'clock in the morning. I stopped at ten o'clock every night. I tried to keep it lower, so. I'm working with the neighbors. I've always had it in the past. You can expect it to be the same, so. So that's the condition I can do to try to change it, and I'm in the effort to do so. So if you could just regard your penalty in regard to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Questions? For the record, commissioners, this is a first offense within the last five years. My recommended penalty will be five hundred dollars.
Discussion.
Yeah.
When you say, get a motion to move into a discussion? Or do I need to, I don't need the executive session language?
No, then why, I think they want to go into executive discuss.
Well, do a section.
There's something to cover.
Mission may go into executive session for the following reasons pursuant to Hawaii Vice Statute, section ninety two dash four and subsection ninety two dash five A four to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities. And relating to specific to agenda item number ten, or Anna O'Briens. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session, second.
Executive session. Thank you. Okay.
All right, bye. From executive section discussing agenda item number ten. After discussion, we have decided to move forward with a letter of reprimand. As an alternative to the penalty proposed by corporation counsel. Their motion to.
I make a motion to enact a letter of reprimand in view of the recommendation of counsel for five hundred dollars, second.
Any questions?
No question.
Also, but I so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
One more, Commissioner, one more.
Like agenda item number eleven.
Well, DB will.
On the record, it's like when Lucas console, we've read into the hearing and will until there's no contest.
Motion to approve. No contest, please.
Second.
This is the case where the licensee failed to report the appointment of a new president for the company, for the corporation. And they, you know, in excess of thirty days, since that time, we have, you know, transferred the license and the president that wasn't reported has been approved by the, by the commission. But that, that's, that goes to the violation. And you first connect, you know, on the fine. But we have something else to add to it after you first decide the disposition right now.
Thank you.
For the record, this is a first offense within the past five years. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Luke, could you again kind of elaborate what the timeline was on all of this?
All right, yeah, I think it was two years ago, but anyway, November of the year, you know, whatever year it was. He was the accountant sent to the D C C A that this new guy was taking over, right? But it was not reported to the liquor commission. At that time, he did that because the current president was, you know, was on his deadbed, so to speak, and they had to, you know, at least get an officer you know, elected so they can conduct business. When I got the request, they were going to do a stock transfer, that was in December, which was you know, over the thirty one day period. And the liquor commission, when I filed the application, it noted with the D C C A had the notice in November, which was more than the time.
So you came on board after the deadline?
Yes, the account, and you got to find this, a lot of times the accountants don't realize what goes on with the liquor commission side, and they just follow with D C C A. In this case, if we didn't have a stock transfer or anything, it could have gone much longer. But that's the only reason it happened, you know, that I caught it, and it was just over a month and a half, I think.
Okay, how long did they have their license?
Oh, geez. This is Playas, the golf course, but since I was, had my office, so he's over ten years, I know.
They have a fine in twenty eleven, so at least before that.
Okay, and the person, he was kind of incapacitated?
Yes. He's, you know, he was removed. I didn't check whether he's survived or not.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to recommendation of a letter of reprimand versus five hundred dollar fine.
Second.
Also, but I been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand in lieu of the penalties proposed by corporation counsel.
Thank you. Thank you. So the second. Thank you.
And I believe that is all of the adjudications I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the agenda item number twelve, commission discussion on a process and procedures outline and agenda. I don't think we have. So we will move on to agenda item number thirteen, administrators.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, South Patilos Administrative Department of Liquidation Commission. I must say that I'm not used to being up here this early. A couple of things of note in the past week, I think this point, we met with, we Assistant Administrator Hari and I met with Deputy Managing Director to discuss progress in terms of the system. As well as to discuss some operational issues that we have, we informed the fact that we were actually anticipating Chief Investigator to join us by next, next week. So, and of course, also in front of our efforts to keep trying to recruit personnel for, for the agency, especially more along lines of assistance as well as licensing clerks, which we, we have had issues recruiting for. I think I think in speaking with, with, with Miss Suriyama, who's our, who's one of our admin specialists, you know, we extended another offer, I think, to not extend it, but there's somebody that There's somebody that. That, that is in the process of. Building a vacancy for. Liquor control investigator, yeah. And I think. We are going to have interviews for office assistants, license and clerks. Next. So hopefully we'll fulfill those positions as well. Additionally, we also had an internal budget meeting just because on the twenty third of December. We will have a formal budget review with the managing director's office. And that, and it's, it's just, it's essential for us now. What we're spending and what we're spending on, so to speak. I think for, I think maybe of interest to you that. One of the items that, a couple of the items that we have in the budget is a request for. Funds for body worn cameras. As well as a request for funds for trading by. The N L O E A, a training that's customized and they will essentially come to. Well, if it always, I guess, we'll, we'll arrange for the N L O E A to come to. Do Wahoo and provide training for, for the enforcement staff. Finally, I had the opportunity to meet with. An applicant. We're looking at our processes, as you know. And I, you know, and was able to. Obtain some information from that applicant. I think for, I think. Because we're trying to deal with, with. With the delays that we're seeing. I thought it was essential to try to speak to somebody on the other side. I don't want us to be. Lack of a better term, victims of group think that thinking that everything is wrong, that's them and they're completely innocent and we're doing the greatest job in the world. So I just spoke with them and, and, and some of the concerns that he, that he, or some of the issues that he's run into. As they've gone through the application process, I think. It came down to the fact that it feels as though. You know. There are requirements. But then, of course, there are also technical requirements, so it feels as though the, the goal line is always changing. And not really quite sure. What it is that the agency is looking for. I think. In, in speaking with this particular individual, I know that they were trying to make sure that they have. Everything ready. And accurate and complete. Because it is their thinking and. Correctly, that if they provide us with an accurate and complete application. Then the process will be prepared for them. And so, you know, it's just nice to have that kind of input and as, and as we discuss what we're going to do, maybe inform some of the decisions that we made. Or some of the, or some of the, not decision, but some of the pathways that we decide to go. And with that, and I'll be up with any questions.
Better report, thank you. You know, I'm gonna. Just make sure and recall agenda item number. Three for. Seventeen A Productions Skull and Crown Trading. Then also recall agenda item number four for Addison Cars LLC D B A booze. Thanks.
So with respect to agenda, I have number three, we'll set for next week. The nineteenth. With respect to item number four, this is the third, the third time they have not shown. I'll ask that we reschedule to the next available and we'll try to make contact before we put it back on the agenda. This is the third time if not.
Excellent, you're right. Thank you. Agreed. Okay, I'm gonna call agenda item number fourteen for announcements. And. It's one announcement on behalf of Chair Hong and. By Chair Holland, Hollinger and the rest of the commission. I'm sure the entire staff want to thank Commissioner Joe Bach for his service. This is his last meeting. He's not going to be able to meet. Make the final meeting of the year, but thank him and kudos and appreciation for your service and. It's been a pleasure working with you over the past year. Plus.
He did volunteer to be stand by.
Okay, I may be back.
Question, any, any comments for, for the record?
No, it's been an experience and pleasure.